Welcome, hold on, first of all, let me do this.
This is an odd setup.
What's that, the, the bees?
Yeah.
Rearrangement of.
Well, I like it in some respects.
Except for you don't have a.
They need like a.
I think they need like a, if they're gonna do it you.
I came to the special budget meeting and I was like, Dawn, you're like straddled between two tables, you don't look, you know.
I don't know, I have to look and do it.
But it does stop you from.
Yeah.
Look down.
Because maybe some I.
And kind of see each other.
The meeting from, the regular minutes from March, we would approve in April.
Who am I today?
Gary.
Gary.
So you've got them.
I'm al- I'm almost positive that I did something with this minute, this, this stuff.
Well, if not, you can do it, and if you did, just forward them to us and we'll review them in May.
But I mean, right, right now, I'm.
Okay.
I'm not too sure I understand what, what I did or did not do, so.
Okay. So, we'll approve. March. In our main meeting, okay?
Okay.
And then in May also, um, we'll need to do the special meeting from last Friday. Makes sense? What was last Friday? Fifteenth? Something like that.
Eleven?
Fourteen. Well, last Tuesday was the.
Fourteen, yeah, fourteen.
Oh, you're right, it was the fourteenth.
She was right.
Okay, so.
There we go, okay. So on to old business, let me knock out the New Ridge plat first, hallelujah, it got signed today. Okay?
Okay.
And Teresa and Al did a really good job on Friday of going, you know, that doesn't look right. I don't think that's right, we kept looking, so we made them make some, make some changes, not to the actual. Like, the technical stuff of the plat, not to the road, not to the lot, stuff like that.
Who, who approved them today?
We, nobody approved anything.
Oh, oh, it got finished, it's got redone today.
Yeah, I, I signed it today, Lisa signed it today, the mayor signed it today.
Signed it today, okay.
But they had left residential multifamily as the zoning, so the setbacks were off. And then they added the maintenance agreement for the retention pond.
Oh.
That's, that's, that's there.
So who they, who's, who, who gets it?
Well, the HOA gotta take care of that.
Okay.
Yeah, and then they changed Cortland Lane to Cortland Circle in one place, so that is done, okay? So let's go to, uh, I got some, I kind of was looking at the U D O, let's talk a little bit about, um. The municipal, public use municipal zoning, and I think the easiest way to do it. Took my first road ride on my bike today, you know, like, you know, I don't go when it's really cold. I think I got, I feel like I got run over by a truck. Like, wow, not good, alright, let's go to, um. Municipal, okay. So we've talked about the setbacks, okay? Um, and I think now, let me go, shoot. I kind of want us to look at, um, accessory buildings, I think would be a good thing to look at, I think we also need. Um, to look at signs, um, that kind of thing, just to be sure, um, that we're. That we think those things through, because when you drop a new zoning district into the U D O, you gotta put it in every place. Where there are other zoning districts, makes sense? Okay, um, the other thing. I thought of today is that, you know, we had said last time, we were gonna use the village business district setbacks and building height, and that's all fine. And a minimum lot size of thirty thousand, I think it needs to be forty thousand. And we can grandfather, they'll just grandfather that one, cause that one well site isn't almost.
It's just the one well site.
Yeah, okay, so I think it would be, we would be wiser to make it forty thousand, because anything you buy now. That gets re-subdivided is gonna be forty thousand, and I don't know, can you think of any circumstances where the village would buy something? That was less than an acre, the well sites are on an acre. The pool, the pickleball courts, I would think those are pretty easily an acre. The park is a lot of acres.
The only thing I can think of is future well sites that might be. Less than an acre by nature. Let's say someone has a hundred acres, and they agree with the village that they're gonna let you guys have. Half an acre for a well site.
I wonder how much you need for a well site? You know what, in that case, the village could always request a variance.
True.
And I mean, it would be very, it would be very legitimate, I think.
And it would be, I was gonna say, it wouldn't be nefarious in any way.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
If there's any little ships of land next to any municipal properties that the city might wanna buy up.
Yeah, but if they did, then they could just redo.
And combine them.
They combine them, they, they could just replat it, I mean, that, that's, that's what I would do.
Yeah.
I think. Um, so I'm pretty comfortable going in there with a forty thousand square foot minimum lot size, cause I think it's gonna make it easier in terms of the watershed. Okay, now, let's go back over to the U D O, this is a little odd right here.
Wow, we're done with this one already?
Hmm? No, 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 I wanna go over to the U D O because I wanna look at, um.
Okay, but are we, uh, we're not done with this part?
No. And there's no rush, I don't think, on doing this, when I told Lisa we were considering it today, she was like, another public hearing? She, she kind of rolled her eyes like, look, I'm just about to get the map redone, I'm like, yeah, I know, but what we're talking about here is not, you know, like. Um, it's not urgent, makes sense? Alright, so let's go down to.
Okay, are we going to the actual U D O?
I'm going to the U D O, cause I just think that's an easier way to do it. A second there. Okay.
Okay, but we are going to the actual, like, the table, or just the U D O?
No, I'm gonna go, go to the U D O, and I just wanna see what the first thing was that I looked at.
On accessory buildings?
Accessory buildings, yeah.
The words you sent me is twenty-one eight dash one.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, I, I got, I'm, that's why I'm asking whether we're doing that, because the two documents that I'm looking at look like they're the same.
Oh, they might be, so we can look at accessory buildings here, and I guess probably not two birds with one stone, maybe. So, when you look at accessory buildings, um, and if you go, I just wanna see. Where does it say? If you look through what it says for accessory buildings, alright? Shall not be rented or used for gain, I mean, I think that would apply in municipal property, wouldn't it, I mean, you wouldn't be renting those. Um, let's talk about, what, shoot, man, this, this is gonna run us right into new business, so anybody mind if we just combine it? Because we're, we had somebody come in, asking to build a detached garage. That is turning out to be four hundred and eighty square feet, and he's limited, um. To a four hundred and fifty square foot building, when he combines, um, two, I think it's RS thirty lots. Okay? So, um. No, I'm sorry, he's combining two lots and getting an acre. So, they're limited to four hundred and fifty square feet, so let's deal with, um, municipal first, I think.
Okay.
Well, no, because, because we just go right to the next, I mean, sorry, Teresa, well, let's deal with municipal first, sorry.
Alright.
It just, it just happens to be accessory buildings.
You're, you're, I'm like in a daze right now, and you're just, you seem like you're in a daze.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm not helping, sorry. So, if we talk about municipal stuff, any, any issue with doing it exactly like it says here?
Which one, cause there's a difference, there's a variance in the building size.
Okay, okay, now, it's one, now it's two.
Uh, it's, right, so we would do it the same way if it was a well site that somehow needed an accessory building, which would be kind of odd.
Okay, can you tell me what document we're looking at?
Accessory buildings in the U D O, twenty-one, twenty-one dash eight dash one.
I think if you did it the same way in the municipal, it would, it would bear for continuity, like, it would be consistent amongst the neighborhood, and it would be.
Did we just say something about public municipal use zoning district? Okay, so why are we in the accessory buildings?
Saying, we're looking at, we're looking at accessory buildings in terms of what we think is appropriate for public use in municipal.
Okay.
There we, sorry, Teresa.
Yes, because I'm like, hmm?
Yeah. I think.
So that's twenty-one eight one.
Yeah, I agree with Tash, Tasha, just to, just to be consistent, we apply the same standard to municipal. And if somebody, let's say, for example, I don't know, maybe the fire department needs to do something mandated by the state that requires something bigger.
That's a variance.
It's a variance, and, and it would be one, I think, that would be easily granted, it wouldn't set a precedent for anything that would, you know, bite anybody in the tail later on. So, are we good with that, I'm not trying to rush this, but I don't wanna complicate this either. Ah, Mayor, get over here.
So we're in this old business?
Yeah.
Public municipal, and we're just saying that we're gonna apply the same standards to? The accessory buildings in the new business?
Yeah. No, we're gonna apply the same standard in accessory, currently in accessory buildings to the public use municipal district. Because what happens is, you gotta go through the U D O, and you gotta drop in, and they would have to be landscaped, I mean, all the same, you know, they'd have to follow the same rules, basically.
So which one is gonna be the standard, is it gonna be, this is the one, is this the one with, with these measurements, is this municipal? And this is the RA twenty, or RS twenty here? There's a difference, there's a variance by about, what, maybe?
Yeah, because all the lots here, all the municipal lots.
There's fifty, yeah.
Are gonna be the, a bigger size, we don't have any municipal lots that are smaller size.
So if we're gonna apply the same standards.
Yeah.
It's, is it gonna be percentage wise, or the actual?
Either way.
Whatever's great.
Whatever.
So the RS twenty will move from two hundred and fifty minimum to a, or maximum to a three hundred maximum, is that, am I understanding right?
Why would RS twenty move?
Cause it's just, it's, yeah, it would, cause it's less than an acre.
What are you, what are you looking at?
Free, free paragraph three, well, two eight one.
Okay, so now. I don't know what I'm gonna rewrite it, because I'm totally, totally confused.
Nothing yet, I think, I'm just.
No, I mean, I'm like, I'm first in public mi- uh, municipal zone, okay, then I'm going to U D O, then I'm going to, uh, accessory building, so I'm like.
Okay, wait, okay, so.
Seriously, come this way, so I'm worried.
RS twenty would be, uh, on single lots, less than an acre, would be less than an acre.
Yeah.
But then here, less than an acre, would be ten percent, ten percent, but then this is four, three hundred, and this is four, two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, whichever is greater.
If we're keeping them the same, there's a variance here.
Okay, where did you, is this in the U D O?
Mm-hmm. This is seven point one eleven.
That's the, that's the. Accessory buildings, good catch, accessory buildings.
But it makes a big difference here, because now you're at three fifty, but if you moved to four fifty.
Where did you get this from, that's old.
You sent me this, this is the link you sent.
Oh, oh, but wait a minute, wait a minute, okay, that's, wait a minute, okay, I'm sorry, when we get into new business, I'll explain that.
Okay.
That's the old, that's.
Well, now I'm totally confused.
Listen, I, I have no idea what I'm doing.
Okay, this, is this the February twenty twenty recommendation, okay?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Let me get into the actual U D O.
Sorry, go, go to the U D O.
No worries.
Okay, I'm in the U D O.
I think I'd like to just close the meeting as well.
Hey, but I'm in an accessory building.
Can we have a redo?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not too sure, I, I don't, I'm like.
Give me a second to get to the right thing, I think.
Teresa, all you need to know is that from when we talk about the municipal district, we're gonna apply the same accessory building standards to that new district. That we currently have for all the other districts, and I, I'm, I caused the confusion, I apologize.
We will apply, I'm, I'm writing this, but then I'm like.
I was reading off a recommendation, mm-hmm, not the actual U D O, this is the actual U D O.
Right, right. Right, right.
Okay.
I'm like, where'd you get that from?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I was like, you gave it to me.
Okay, so we're, we're only talking about, just so that I'm clear, we're only talking about accessory buildings.
Yes. Yes, in both.
And we are all, we are, and we are going to, we're looking at the public municipal use zoning district and the accessory buildings with that.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna recommend that the municipal.
It sounds like we're, like, we're talking about public municipal use zoning in general, just about the accessory.
Well, what we're doing is, we're going through and we're looking at, if we do municipal zoning, you have to look at accessory buildings, we need to look at signs.
I understand, don't confuse me in the.
You know, what kind of signs, no, I'm not, no, 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 I'm not, trust me.
Don't, we're not talking about the signs here.
No, no, we're about to, though.
I said, I, no, 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 but we, we didn't say that, I need to find out, I need to make sure that we're talking about accessory buildings within the public municipal.
Correct.
And since we're mixing all the new, it's kind of like.
We're not, we're, we're not doing, I, I messed up.
Well, you, we are because you're, it's a new gender.
What, what, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna apply the same standards. To municipal district for accessory buildings as are currently listed in twenty-one dash eight dash one of the U D O. That help?
A little bit. Okay. Alright, what, what, um.
Now, let's go.
One layer of confused, confusion has been filled out.
Alright, now, let's roll over and look at fencing, did we talk about fencing last week, I don't think so, did we?
Okay, so, so we're. Are we gonna go back in new business and talk about accessory buildings again?
In new business, right, in new business, yeah, that, that new business accessory building.
So we're, we were only talking about.
Municipal.
Municipal, okay.
Yeah.
You, you didn't wanna discuss on making accessory buildings larger?
Too confusing, we're, let's do that in new business, just like I put it.
Okay.
I think that would be, it'll be easier. Um, so if you look at fencing, which is twenty-one dash eight dash three point one, that's zoning districts twenty, thirty, forty, R M, V B D, and R D.
Okay, we're now in fencing, alright, and which, which is twenty-one eight three.
Yeah, this one, I mean, I don't, I, I guess I'd have to do a walk, um, to see.
Are we looking at the, the ones in between, the additional accessory buildings, and travel trailers, and all that?
No, 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 we're talking, we're just, we're on, we're on municipal now, looking at fencing, where, how, how we wanna do it.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so I don't know, do we have fencing around, we got fencing around the water tower act, well, you got fencing around the water tower, which obviously is not gonna fit into what we have here.
Does that fencing have anything to do with insurance mandates or state mandates?
I, I was gonna say, it could, and after the, after the, um, power outage, I mean, it's just gonna be a security thing, so. I don't know, we may have to give some additional thought to this one, um, about how we wanna do it. Cause I'm not sure, I don't think you can mandate, um. I mean, if you go to put a fence up around a well, you want a security fence, you want a fence that somebody is gonna think twice about trying to get over, so obviously, that's not gonna be four feet.
Hmm.
Okay? Um, do we have a fence around the, the, we don't have a fence around the police station. We have a small fence up front, just to, but nothing, we don't have one around the, the fire guys, I don't think. Um, and I hate to say this, but I don't know, do we have fences around our well sites, I don't think so. I just rode past one today, I can't, I just.
I, I could picture the building.
Uh, me too, but I can't think, okay, so the one on Ridge, that doesn't have a fence around it?
No.
No, yeah. Um.
We fenced the pool.
Right, but that's a six foot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that in here anywhere, or is, or are we building that now? Distancing of municipal properties.
Well, it's not in there, cause we don't have municipal, so I don't know, um, the pool is mandated by the state, up to, can be up to six feet. And of course, you would want that, again, for security purpose, you don't want Joe Bagged Donuts climbing over the fence, although I had my husband do it once when I left my water bottle. Then I called him and confessed. It's true.
I'm not putting that in.
Don't put that in his, no. So I don't know, I mean, how, how do we, how?
Mary, Mary says, but she can mess with things.
How do we do this?
Maybe in accordance with federal and state regulations, or. X, or X, whatever we want, whatever is less or greater.
Or, or.
Or more stringent.
I think you have two types, uh, two separate types of fencing in municipal that are legitimate here, and you have decorative fencing, you have security fencing, there's two different things.
That's what I think, yeah, yeah.
One of which state and insurance rules will apply, and then, um, the other is community standard.
That is well put.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's a good way to look at it too, so, fencing.
Okay, but, but this one has the maximum. You know, the U D O has the maximum in there.
Well, and see, that's, but that's why we're looking at it, because there are some things in municipal that aren't gonna fit what's in the U D O. And so what we're gonna have to do is, is craft language, um. That allows municipal to have security fencing.
There is.
So it will be, but it will be, the height will be more than forty-eight inches, okay?
Yeah.
What about section twenty-one eight three point three?
V B D, there we go.
And that addresses security fences and their standards.
That might be a good way to do it.
Which one is that?
Uh, down two sections below, twenty-one dash eight dash three.
Well, I am in dash eight, but.
Yeah, no sense in reinventing it.
But where's the, where's the secure, the one that you just read?
Um, twenty-one dash eight dash three point three, V, uh, V B D.
Village business, yeah, village business district.
Yeah.
That basically sets out the standard of security fencing, a maximum of six feet. And of course, if the state comes back and says that those fences need to be moved to seven or eight feet, then that's a variance.
Then you, yeah, that's, yeah, that's not a big, I think we just do it.
Okay, again, I am looking at the village business district?
Yeah, and it says you can have fences up to six feet.
And then it talks about the, the types of materials.
Screening.
Um, talks about even in, uh, non-residential zoning, which would be municipal, um, can be vinyl coated chain link if secured with, uh, or if screened.
Yep. And actually, you know what, if you thought of a wellhouse, and you thought of a six foot security fence and it was screened, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it could be up to six feet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so let's do this.
I think the wording in this is pretty spot on, I'm just gonna bring it one more time.
Okay, security, security fencing would be the same as V B D.
Mm-hmm.
Oops.
Is six feet en- enough?
Well, six feet is pretty good, I mean, you're not gonna take that in one jump.
Oh, maybe you can climb it over, no, depends on what the fence is, I mean, if it's a chain link fence, you can climb it over.
The only difference would be if they added the wire at the top.
Yes.
Concertina wire.
Okay, so that, that would probably add.
That would slow you down a little bit.
Yeah.
But that's not a six foot fence, would that be a six foot fence with an addition, or is that a seven foot fence?
I don't know, but I mean, that would definitely not allow people to jump over, cause I, in the high school, I worked with kids.
I just don't know what.
About sixty tall, and the kids were jumping in back and forth all the time.
Yeah, I know that they're still settling, I think the dust is still settling around the power outage and the lack of security and what that means for future infrastructure.
That's gonna be in the list.
I was gonna say, that's gonna be the state legislature next year.
But this one doesn't say anything about, you know.
Yeah. So we just don't, I mean, we can't anticipate what they're gonna come back with, as far as that goes, for wells and electrical, things like that.
Well, here's what we'll do, I'll ask, because the only places I can think of where you'd need security fencing right now would be around the well sites, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, cops have guns, they don't need security, I mean, you know, that's not, so let me get, I'll ask Gary Samuels what he thinks. You want six feet, or you want six feet plus concertina wire?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Either one, the rest of the wording in this is great, the types of it, the, the materials, everything else looks good in that.
So we need to, uh, further. Discussion?
Six feet. Six feet. Okay, okay, got it, okay, now, um, that works for me. And we don't, do we have, we have a fence around the pickleball court, and I think that was done. In line with the residential districts, you guys play pickleball?
I do.
I go to the pool. I saw the fence there, it's not a corner.
Ah.
Yeah.
It's the pool fence.
Yeah, the pool fence is six, okay, alright, so fencing, I think, that works, I mean, I think that definitely works.
I agree.
Okay, so now, the next thing I think we would look at is signs. Alright, um, starting in twenty-one dash eight dash five, and if this is the table, I'll be really happy.
There is a table?
Yay, where is mine?
Just below that.
Okay, so, um, if you go to the table.
Mm-hmm.
We've gotta add public use municipal, alright, I mean, that's, that's pretty easy across the top, and then, let's just make this simple. Go to V B D, and let's see, cause I would think, I would, what's a, what's a banner sign?
That's just like, um, like a vinyl sign, that's a banner, would be for like holidays, or special events, things of that nature, it wouldn't be anything permanent, it's definitely a temporary item.
Canopy, construction sign, directional sign, directory sign. Electronic message sign, that's a scary thought.
Hmm.
Um, freestanding sign, government sign, illuminated sign, monument sign, political sign, uh, political signs, I don't think we can have those.
But they, but if you look at the column, there is a category that says temporary.
Yeah, they're allowable temporary.
So we can, we can make, uh, uh, you know, we can make, either the same or say that.
Well, okay, whoa, whoa, whoa.
You know, no temporary sign is allowed, or something like that.
No, but, okay, if you have public property. Uh, you put political signs on it, I don't think so. I mean, I don't think we would let people put political signs on the well prop, well, we would put on the well property anyway.
Okay.
But I don't think you could put political signs, like, on the village property, could you?
No.
I don't, I don't.
But I could see it being allowed in the village business district, because as a business, to what you want to do, yeah.
Oh, but, yes, oh, oh, V B D, that's totally different, but when we're talking about municipal.
I agree with that.
That's one place where I don't think you will allow political signs.
Okay, but I think that, maybe I didn't make it clear, what I'm talking about is, if you look at the category of either temporary versus permanent. I would just address the, look at the ones that are permanent, see if we're okay with that, and then just simply say that. Only permanent signs.
Well, no, no, because you could potentially have. A, could you have a real estate sign? I'm trying to think, transferring village, selling village property is very different, Teresa, you might have a really good point.
I'm looking at like, okay, what is this blade bracket for this?
Now, municipal, we're gonna be putting this building in that.
Yep.
The well sites, so if, let's say the community wants to advertise something, there's a big event. If you took all permanent signs away, you can't advertise that on municipal property, it would, it would, you wouldn't be able to do that, you wouldn't be able.
No, I think Teresa's saying, to keep the permanent, right?
And get rid of all the temporaries.
But I don't think you would get rid of all the temporaries, because.
You gotta go line by line.
Okay, let's see the temp, that's what I'm saying, let's go through the temporary.
Yeah, like, like an A frame or a sandwich board, okay, say the cop shop does a remodel, and they're gonna have an open house. So they put an A frame out by the road that says, hey, police open house, stop on in, that's temporary, there's, I wouldn't think there'd be a problem with that. Let's say somebody puts up a banner, Foxfire celebrates its sixtieth anniversary, I don't think there's a problem with that. But I do think we're gonna get into issues with political signs.
Yeah, I don't think we should allow that, yeah, I agree with that.
I don't, yeah.
Okay, well then, let's exclude, let's look at the ones that we would exclude completely and say.
Well, I don't know.
Not this ones.
I don't know that I would exclude any of them, well, I would exclude an estate or farm sign, I mean, that's not.
Or a residential sign, those are being.
Right, right, but a freestanding sign, a government sign, I mean, most of those, with the exception of political. Residential, residential development. Okay, I'm gonna get a note here. Signage. Signs, so we exclude political, residential, um, farm.
What would a residential development sign be?
Uh, Wendy Ridge.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, residential, yeah, we don't want that.
What, what are the, what would a yard sign be?
I don't know that I would have a yard sign, I mean.
But that's exact, but, but what is it all?
A yard sign, garage sale.
Oh, okay, well, then, excuse that.
You know? Or, you know, welcome our first baby, or, you know, Joanne's having her hundred and tenth birthday, or something like that. Wall signs, window signs. Okay, would we have yard signs in municipal?
Don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Keep off the grass.
Don't poop here, and those little dogs.
Okay, so what's the difference, uh, when you're saying yard sign, what's the difference of, between that and advertising some event that, somebody, you know, like a. Like, community event?
Yeah, I mean. It's, it's temporary.
I think an A frame sign, like, A frame signs are not allowed as yard signs, that's, you can't put an A frame sign in your yard, that's not allowed. But a yard sign is, and that would probably be residential stuff, residential type things,
Garage, garage sale.
or new baby,
Birthday party.
birthday party, graduation, they're all temporary, they're, they all go in the yard.
Okay, but where, where in here is that sign that you're talking about?
The A-frame sign?
Is that what, like, is that?
It's the first, it's the first one, Theresa, it's the first one.
But is that, is that the one that you're talking about that somebody is saying, you know, like,
I would think if you were...
The homeowners association is something, anyway.
Yeah, that would be an A-frame sign. That's just a, two boards, it's an A-frame, two boards, you see them, businesses put them out for like,
Like an open house.
Yeah, open houses.
Okay, well, then, then I guess you would exclude yard signs.
I, I think you could exclude, yeah. We have, um, sandwich boards, frame boards at the gym, and we change them all the time. You know, this event gets over, we take it down, this event. You know, like, you could have an A-frame sign in front of the building that says, Tuesday, four thirty P.M., village council, you know, stuff like that. That would be to, to me, that would be totally appropriate.
Okay.
Pay taxes here.
Yeah, it's an easy temporary way to get attention for people, and businesses use them, municipalities use them, yeah, that's legitimate.
Pay extra after January. Yep, okay. Whoops, Mary, get on the right thing here. Development signs, yard signs. Okay, so, let's walk through this list one more time. We're good with the A-frame, we're good with the banner, we're good with the blade and bracket. Blade and bracket actually just hangs down, you know, like, from the building or something. Um, I'm good with the bulletin board, a canopy, construction sign, yes, only because, like, when they were building this building, there was a construction sign.
True.
Um, directional sign, a directory sign, not that we're ever gonna need those things unless, I don't think we would, but electric message sign, a state or farm sign would be no.
Mm-hmm.
A freestanding sign, I haven't e, hesitate to even ask what the definition of that is.
I have a hard time understanding what the difference between that and A-frame sign is.
Oh, come back to that one. Government sign, yes, illuminated sign, yes, monument sign, yes, political sign, no.
Oh, okay. Well, and yet here, it's, A-frame sign is a temporary thing.
Right.
There's a picture of a freestanding sign.
I was gonna say, that, I, it rang in my head as soon as I said, what is that? It's like the little board signs, and you just have like a maze.
The freestanding sign is permanent, how is that?
Uh, freestanding, did you say freestanding's permanent?
No.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's re, actually allowed every, everywhere.
Wow.
What, what is a freestanding sign? I guess we better, we better find out.
It's...
That's interesting. Let's, let's go first.
It is a literal freestanding sign, and it's a flat sign with two pieces of wood, stuff on the ground.
Okay, but, well, well, that's a fact. If they're all, if they're allowed everywhere, I would like to find out.
It can say anything you want to say. It's almost like a tiny billboard.
Let's come back to that. Let's finish what we won't allow, and then come back to freestanding. So political signs are a no, real estate sign is a no, residential sign is a no, residential development is a no, yard sign is a no, wall signs and window signs would be a yes.
Freestanding sign, does that encompass garden flags?
Hang on one second, we're gonna find out.
Honestly, cause it's the same structure, it's just a smaller scale.
Hang on, I'm gonna look in the definitions and I'll...
Meaning like, straight issue.
Like if somebody put, yeah, like the little garden flags, that would be the same structure as a freestanding sign.
Hang on a second.
But is there like a, uh, shoot, size attached to it, or how big it can be?
Yeah, I'm sure there is.
Um, I don't, hold on a second.
I'm sure there is. This whole sign thing got forced when the Supreme Court made a very interesting ruling. There are definitions here and there. Okay, let's see. Oh, excuse me.
Well, print says, a permanent sign shall be designed and constructed according to generally accepted engineering practices.
Where are you? Are you in definitions?
I'm at the to, yeah, at the top of this. Of this.
I can't find freestanding sign.
Signs are either permanent, okay, then they're accepted engineering practice with stand wind pressure and load distribution specified in the latest, well, illuminated signs, and signs with electrical, permanent signs may or may not require, I, I don't know about this thing.
Hang on.
Because it is considered a permanent, permanent sign.
Hmm, we do not have freestanding in the definition either.
No. Well, actually, there are, there are no definitions for the others either.
There is a section under twenty-one eight, five point one, that says, temporary signs may not require a permit and must be freestanding.
Maybe that's where they got it from.
So that might be where they got it from.
Anybody want the definition?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
A freestanding sign is a sign anchored directly to the ground or supported by one or more posts, columns, or other vertical structures, or supports, and not attached to or dependent upon support from any building.
Okay, so...
Sometimes they refer to as ground signs, monument signs.
Every sign.
Yeah, I mean, can I put a, oh, I mean, does that mean that I can put a six by six sign in my front yard?
I was gonna say, it sounds a little redundant though, cause most of the signs on that are free, all the temporary signs are freestanding, with the exception of the A-frame.
I think it is redundant.
But here's the thing, oh, but here's the thing. We're saying you could have a freestanding sign in every residential district.
Only banner is.
I never what?
Everything else.
But there are sign, sign limits, there, I think in here there's sign limitations, signs.
There are, but I don't.
Yep, but where?
Signs, excuse me.
Where, where, which section is that?
Same section. I was just reading it a minute ago.
There are.
Yeah, but when, what, what part?
Okay, so freestanding signs, permanent, yes. You have to have a permit.
Max, four foot square.
It requires a permit.
Okay, signs bearing only property numbers, post office box numbers, I'm in twenty-one eight dash five point one. Um, names of occupants on premises, I guess that could be freestanding. I don't... That's a little scary.
It is.
See, before the UDO, we had, um, and I don't know, maybe it's in here someplace and I just don't see it, we had some pretty specific, um, limitations on size.
I'll bet you though that they did this, Mary, because just like Tasha described, is my wife puts them out, those little things that say spring and...
There's like a little, there's two little things that go right in the, yeah.
Yeah, but that, but that doesn't, uh, there's no definition of...
That is a freestanding sign.
I understand, but what if I decided to print my own and put something like that, that is six by six, is that?
Well, here, here it says,
I think there's size limitations.
Signs requiring a permit.
Okay, that works, that's it.
Twenty-one eight dash five point two, signs requiring a permit, first paragraph. Signs may not exceed thirty-two square feet and may not be higher than six feet off the ground, nor placed on a raised pedestal or mound. But still, I don't, I mean...
That sounds like something that's made for the business district,
Yeah, that came out of the old VBD.
and not for residential, but this table,
That table's scaring me a little bit.
All the way across the board.
I'm sure. Cause you just looked at size requiring a permit, and there's a whole bunch of things here that do not require them, that are not...
See, but here's the thing, directory sign is not allowed, not allowed.
I know, on the golf course, there's a...
I think that has to be defined. That's the only thing to fix that, is a definition, and there could be...
Because if you look at all the rest of the signs...
This, this, you know what, this looks like it was cut and paste from somewhere else with, any, any...
Well, it was, because, because it came from the old, it came from the old ordinances, but you wouldn't, if you look down the list, most things are prohibited, as they should be, in the residential districts.
But a small residential sign, that's freest, that is a freestanding sign, and if it's one of those little...
It's a freestanding sign.
Okay, but when you, when you, come on, talking about small, but what are we talking about? Small like how?
I'm just saying, it's redundant.
Well, it's small to you, it might not be small, small to me.
Well, I mean, they're in the neighborhood, you see them, like, by people's driveway, yeah.
I understand, but, I mean, I know what you're talking about, but what if I decided tomorrow to print one that is five times as big as that?
Then you would be well within your rights to do so.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Except that you have to get a permit. That would be the only place that, you'd have to keep it under thirty-two square feet.
I mean, on the golf course, there's people that have signs, I don't know if anybody goes, but, like, there's, like, pro Trump people that have signs as big as that wall on their, back of their house.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
It's a flag, isn't it?
It's a sign.
When you're talking about, it's a flag.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they, they are attached to the wall.
No, this is actually a sign, like a banner.
Is it attached to the house?
Yeah, like on the deck.
Oh, it's a banner, okay, that's, okay.
Yeah. But it's a sign, I consider.
Well, uh, you might know we'd hit a thorn thing here.
Funny.
Okay, so here's the deal. Let's stick to municipal, understanding we might have just tripped over a landmine.
I think we're thinking a few hours.
No, I don't think so. No, because in fact, I think that the way we're thinking is that this is, not only that this part that we're discussing needs clarification, but the actual UDO needs clarification.
Right, but that's not on, so I got a mental note for that.
I know it's not. It's not, it's not.
What are your fears that someone would do, I guess is my question.
Well, you know what, ten years ago, I probably wouldn't have thought of anything about it. Today, I don't know, there's a lot of stupid running around.
But I mean, what would they do? What's an example?
Uh, ten by ten start in their front yard, supporting their favorite political candidate, a freestanding sign. See, that stuff all used to have limits, and I'm not sure that it's not in there someplace, but we, we, in the old, right, in the old ordinances, I swear, you could have a political sign that was like ten by ten, I mean, the, the size of the sign was like really big. And so we scaled all that stuff back, but I don't see anything now that talks about dimensions.
Yes.
Anybody, anybody finding it?
I think if you were gonna try to get any, I, I, I don't think it's a huge landmine, because if you were gonna try to do that and get a permit for it, there's an entire section of prohibited signs, they can't obscure things, you can't put a six by six sign in your front yard and, and not obscure things. That's just not possible. You can't obscure windows, you can't obscure, um, it can't block any kind of vision of drivers or roadway, I mean, there's so many things that...
You're talking about your front yard.
Mm-hmm.
By, so that means that this is only in terms of the front yard, or the, or anywhere? Because the lots here, you can see from anywhere. I mean, it's not like...
But what does that have to do with prohibited signs?
Okay, but that's...
I'm saying it would be prohibited, because if you tried that, you would be breaking one of these prohibited sign rules.
Okay, so we're talking about that this only applies to the front yard?
No.
All of the signs?
No, no, no. We're, if we're talking about the freestanding sign, that applies to every district in the entire code. It's allowed in every one of them as a permanent structure, but you have to have a permit. You can't have a permit for something that breaks any of the prohibited sign rules.
See, here's what I'm concerned about. I wouldn't wanna get us into a situation where we had someone request a variance because this thing wasn't defined.
And, and I understand that too.
That will definitely happen.
Yes. And so then, my other, my other concern is this, if we are introducing this new section, and this is going to be part of it, it's going to, in other words, turn that...
But, but see, here's the thing, in municipal, I'm not worried about it, because in the municipal, you can go to the council and say, hey, this, you need to not do this, or, you know, there's a state regulation or something like that. I'm thinking about freestanding signs in residential, and that's kinda making me wonder a little bit.
Okay, the reason why I brought up about the location is because my lot is like this.
Mm-hmm.
So I could put something that doesn't obscure my house, and yet you could supersede from the, from the street.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, signs not requiring a permit, so if you wanted to go get a temporary, not requiring a permit, it's, can be four, four square foot. Signs that require a permit can be...
Where, hey, where are you reading's four square feet?
Right now.
I got it right in the front line. Okay, I got you.
So if you, anything else would require a permit, that's when they could go, eh?
Yeah.
Well, any freestanding permanent sign will require a permit. It doesn't matter the size.
No, this says signs not requiring a permit. The following signs, and they're listed, maximum of four square feet.
But if you go back to the table, freestanding sign is allowable in all sections as, a, a, we're talking about a permanent freestanding sign, a temporary freestanding sign is not allowed.
It requires a permit. Okay, now, now that, now that...
But we're talking about a permanent structure.
Yeah.
Okay, now I'm feeling better. Good.
It does require a permit.
Okay.
It says temporary signs.
Again, though, I wouldn't wanna get us into a situation where we got here with them.
Still think it needs to be defined, so I'm just like... We don't have it anywhere in the entire UDO except for right here. That's the only place it's, it comes out, is in that table. There is no freestanding sign in that wording in, anywhere else in the UDO.
All right. I'm just gonna put a note that we need to come back, and in signs, define freestanding. We need to figure out what that...
Yes.
And what, what that means, and is it, does it mean something different in residential and different in the business district?
Okay. I don't know. I don't know. Okay, but, back to the original point.
Mm-hmm.
In municipal and public use, we are excluding political, residential, estate or farm, residential development sign, and yard signs.
True.
And everything else we're good with.
What about a real estate sign?
Can you see any reason for a real estate sign? Because if the village goes to sell property, it's done way, 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 way differently.
Yeah.
I don't, and then I'll get with Gary to see if he wants a six-foot security fence or six-foot plus concertina wire, because he would have a reasonable, um, I mean, the water department, I think, we could write something in there for that. Okay, well, that took a little longer than I thought it would. Um, so we did fencing, we did signs, we did accessory buildings. Are there any other categories that you can think of? Um, oh, you know what, vehicle fuel tanks, twenty-one dash eight dash seven.
Mm-hmm.
Says...
I just sent you a definition.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll open it up. Um, vehicle fuel tanks, because there's been some talk about putting a vehicle, I don't, a vehicle fuel tank in, we didn't do it because it was too expensive. Um, but, I don't even know if I wanna go there. Because that talks about, um, storage in excess, oh, wait a minute. B, all ve, vehicle fuel tanks in excess of twenty gallons must be either buried, or shall be completely screened. No, we're good, because it says residential, in, in the first one, it says, in excess of twenty gallons is prohibited in residential areas of Foxfire, so I think we're good there. Okay. Any other categories you can think of that we need to look at in terms of being sure that municipal, um, is included? Those were the three big ones to me. And we're a little ways from approval in this municipal anyway, um, so if we think of some, we can go back in and do it, but those were the big three for me. Cause we already designed, we already defined setbacks, we already defined building height. Going, going.
Well...
I'm just scanning through here, I'm like...
No, that's it, that's what I was doing too. I don't think, if you look at twenty-one dash eight dash one point one, which is additional accessory buildings that are allowed in EU, RE, and RA, I don't think any of those apply.
Storage wouldn't, maybe the, sorry, storage wouldn't?
Well, that would be their accessory building though.
Yeah. So what if I, right?
All right. Okay, no, it doesn't look like, because the big section here is on communication, like wireless and stuff, but that has nothing to do with...
Yeah, that doesn't really have anything to do with municipal.
No.
All right. All right. So I'll, the definition of a freestanding sign.
Googles, actually.
Googles?
That's fair enough.
Makes sense. Oh, they're sometimes referred to as ground signs, monument signs.
Yeah, that's where we got duplicate.
I wonder if we really need to have... I wonder if we really need to have freestanding in there.
I felt like it was redundant.
Yeah.
Because isn't everything else residential yard sign? It's your yard.
Yeah. I'm gonna put either define or delete, and we can decide.
Yeah, I would say that too.
All right. Anything else on municipal for tonight?
Doesn't look that way.
Live discussion. Let's move on to accessory buildings and allowable square footage. And now, I'm gonna introduce the recommendation.
Okay, so now we're back to.
Hey, what are you talking about?
Now we're in new business?
New business, accessory buildings. And here's why we're looking at it. Um, I am someone who's really opposed to changing an ordinance just based on one person's request. But every now and then, somebody makes some request, and we kinda go, huh, maybe we need to relook at that. It happened several years ago with fencing. A couple, we move into the area, they said, we'd really like to move here, it's great, but we have dogs, and you only have a three and a half foot, you have a, the 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 max height on a fence can be three and a half feet. I'm like, well dang, my lab could do that with four paws on the ground. So we looked at it and said, okay, we're gonna update this for a couple of reasons. One, three and a half feet is not a standard size. And we didn't want people to have to buy, you know, custom stuff. That's.
Cut a four-foot fence.
Yeah, really, exactly. And so that was a case where someone said, you know, we'd like to see it increased, and it made a lot of sense. We have, I think, the same case with accessory buildings and allowable square footage. Um, and if you go, I I sent you the original recommendation that Planning and Zoning made back in February of twenty twenty.
Where are we now? The one you sent us, which one?
Um, where did it go? Hold on a second. Yeah. Go to Doc's Mirror.
When did you send us that?
I sent it this afternoon. I got on, I got on a roll. Uh, here we go. So, um, what we originally said was that in RS twenty, you could be. Oh, wait, I gotta get to the right thing here. Whoa, 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 whoa. Building, uh, accessory buildings.
Okay, this is what's weird.
What?
When I opened the RS twenty, unless I saved it incorrectly.
Well, you actually, you're looking for an email.
Two, um.
You're looking for an email I sent this afternoon.
I know, but I have an RS twenty to R E, single family residential. And when I saved it, I have an RS twenty. And where's the accessory building part?
You gotta scroll down.
Seven point one eleven? Seven point one point eleven?
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta get down a little bit in it.
You gotta scroll down, you're okay.
Okay. Okay, I see.
So what we originally proposed, the council thought was too complicated. Totally fine. Um, but we said ten, in, we said ten percent of the total area under roof of the main building for two hundred fifty square feet, whichever is greater. And then accessory buildings on single lots larger than one acre but less than two would be ten percent of the total area under roof, which by the way, includes your garage, covered porches, that's under roof, okay? When you look at the total area under roof, you're just not talking about heated square footage.
Right.
So like, my house is twenty-five hundred, I have my garage, I'm probably packing another four fifty or five hundred square feet, okay?
So you can go four hundred fifty square foot.
Yeah. Um, so when the council looked at it, they simplified it, and if you look at, um, they gave you three hundred square feet in lots of one acre or less, okay? Not to exceed ten percent of the total area of under roof of the main building, or three hundred square feet, whichever is greater, all right? Single accessory building. Accessory buildings on single lots larger than one acre but less than two, not to exceed ten percent of the total area under roof, or four hundred and fifty square feet, whichever is greater. But then, when you go lots of two to four, um, you can't exceed, shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the total area under roof, or eight hundred square feet. Well, I'm wondering if, it seems to me that people have more stuff today.
Yes.
I I just, it just seems like, you know, if you have families moving in, there's more toys, there's more, there's more outdoor gear, there's all kinds of stuff. So I'm wondering whether we should look at increasing the amount of square footage allowed on larger than one acre but less than two. Because when you go from two to four, like I could have two point zero one, and now I can have eight hundred square feet. But if I'm two point zero zero,
Four fifty.
Or 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 I'm one point nine nine, I'm gonna be four fifty. And if you, if you look at it.
Can I say something?
Yep.
But in a way, that's kind of unfair. Let me tell you why. All of the, all of the houses on my street, the garage is, uh, ha, uh, in, uh, has been taken away by the laundry room. Because in my house, one-fourth of my garage space is the laundry room, which has been included as part of the house.
But that, no.
So I don't have, I, you're talking about, uh, storage.
I'm not talking about, I'm just talking about, when when we're talking about the amount of accessory building, square footage you can have, we're talking about the heated area of your house, the heated square footage, plus any areas under roof, which would be your garage.
Right.
I think that's why they moved it to three hundred.
Yeah.
To account for that extra space without complicating. Because everybody knows their square footage, but do you know your square footage with your garage?
No, most people don't. Most people don't, yeah. So on single lots of two to four acres, do we wanna consider, I'm sorry, on single lots of larger than one but less than two? Do we wanna consider increasing that?
A twenty by twenty-four foot structure, which is a nice building.
That's a large building, yeah.
Just four E.
Yep. So if you have two, if you have one point nine nine acres of property, right, times what, forty-six thousand three hundred and fifty, something like that? What's an acre? Forty-three?
Forty, forty-six.
Forty, four.
Square foot.
Yeah, I should, I totally shouldn't know that.
More than forty-four.
Yeah.
Hang on a second. How many square feet in an acre? I got it. Forty-three thousand five sixty. Okay, so let's say I have one point nine nine acres.
So, like.
It gives me eighty-six thousand six hundred, eighty, eighty-six thousand five hundred square feet of space.
Yeah, four hundred fifty's nothing.
That's what I'm thinking.
It's like, isn't it like ten percent?
Well, and you gotta watch the hard shit. You can build up to twelve percent, okay? So that leaves you ten thousand four hundred and two square feet to build. And most people on, let's say, let's say you have an acre, or let's say you have an acre and a half. Now you got sixty-five thousand square feet, a little more, all right? And if I take twelve percent of that, I got seven thousand eight hundred and forty square feet that I can build.
Then take away your house.
Okay.
Take the average house out of it.
What, you say twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, uh, yeah, three thousand for, just to be conservative.
Three thousand? I still have forty-eight hundred square feet to build.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's a lot of space.
Yeah. I could see how somebody wanted to build a, you know, like an additional building, twenty by twenty-four is kind of like a standard building.
Is it?
Kinda, because your trusses and.
Okay, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it just, I'm not big on, me personally, on directing how big somebody could have something with exception. You know, so I mean, I'm probably the wrong person to ask. I want a big garage.
I know. But see, here's the thing. What we were concerned about in residential was that you didn't want people having monstrosities.
Right, like.
And you didn't want some.
Pole barns.
Yeah, or somebody having three little accessory buildings. So we had to, that's what kinda pulled it in and said you can have one.
Yeah, I get it.
But look at, looking at the square footage, I mean.
Well, twenty-four by twenty-four building would be a pole barn. That's not like your average accessory building, like, uh, the pre-built, pre-built buildings. Those are largest, usually twelve by whatever.
And remember, remember, it has to match the house.
Yeah, yeah, I'm I'm thinking in my mind, structure, you know, like a building.
And it can't be made of metal or plastic.
It has to have a foundation.
No, it it cannot. It has to match the house. We're, you're, we're talking a separate built structure.
So if one acre gets you three hundred, they have to, instead of two acres gets you four fifty, so maybe two acres gets you six hundred. I don't know.
I I'm thinking five fifty to six.
I I think six hundred would be a a good round number.
Well, here's the thing, though.
But then I think you have to.
When you go two to four, you can only have eight hundred.
That's what I was, that that's, if you're gonna move that one up, now you've got somebody that has four times that acre up two, and all they can have is eight hundred, when then one to two can have six hundred.
But they can have two, how, they can have two accessory buildings. The one to two acre boys can still only have one accessory building.
True.
I'm thinking more like five fifty. If you're three hundred.
Yeah, you can get a pretty big building. Twenty-four by twenty-four is five seventy-six. That's a big building.
That's a very large building.
You could park a lot of cars in there.
And a big truck, Al.
And a big truck. Just saying.
Just saying, I got a big truck.
It won't fit my car garage.
So if we, say a single can have three hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Somewhere between five and six hundred. I'm a little iffy on six hundred, only because the person who's on four acres can only have eight hundred.
Yeah, or has one point one acre, and you're gonna give him six hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that's the other side of it.
Yeah, it's a little tricky. But if you take the three hundred square feet on less than an acre, and you go one to two at five fifty, now you've split the difference between the three hundred and the eight hundred.
Yeah.
Not that that's some mathematical, you know, requirement, but.
Or if somebody came in with some special design of something that they were making, and it was twenty square foot larger, wouldn't that be a variance anyway?
They would never get it.
Yeah.
A variance, that that would be really, you'd have to show hardship. My truck's too. Get, sell your truck and get a toy off of it.
The pollen.
I don't know, guys, what do you think?
Yeah.
I'm very willing to increase it.
Yeah.
Because when you look at two to four, and they can have, you know, eight hundred square feet.
You have a good point.
But can they have one sixteen hundred square foot building?
Wait a minute, a single accessory. And at single lots greater than four acres, they can have twelve hundred square feet, or forty percent of the total area under roof. This is, this is like, there's no mathematical formula, okay? It's just, it's subjective, and we just need to decide what what we think. I'm I'm all for increasing the one to twos.
Have you had somebody come in, need something bigger?
Yeah. And I'm willing to look at it, because I thought that the one to twos and the two to fours were too small to begin with. So. But here's the other thing. I'd rather have somebody, because this is a real structure. I mean, this requires a building permit. This has to meet all the requirements for an accessory building. You can't, you know, toss up a slap shack.
Yeah. I don't know if you saw at the bottom, though, it does says detached garages when the main building has no garage are not considered accessory buildings for the purpose of the restrictions of some section.
Correct. If.
So you could build a bigger garage if you don't have.
If you don't have an attached garage. But very few houses out here do not have an attached garage. There's one on Hoffman, that was a modular. There are very few. And even Mr. Hildebrand's, the lot that you're in, that had, that, but that also had an attached garage.
So.
So don't ask me how, don't ask, don't ask me how that three-car garage got approved. I don't, I think that was a really, really long time ago. What do we think?
I think you're right.
But what do you think the number ought to be?
Oh.
I don't have a problem with five fifty or six hundred, to be quite honest. Because I think it's such a small linear change when you're talking about a building of that size. You can add fifty feet like that.
Well, if you're on one acre, and you pop up six hun- six hundred square feet, that's quite a bit.
But if you're on one acre and pop up five fifty, you're gonna notice it just the same.
Yeah.
Probably.
It's gonna be the same height, then all but
Yeah.
five foot of it's gonna be there.
Fifty square foot, ten by five.
Yeah, ten feet that way and five foot this way, all but that's gonna be there. So it's, I mean, it's really half a dozen of one and six of the other.
Okay, well.
How many lots do we have that are one point change?
Oh, we got them.
Like small, one point two, one point three?
Yeah, you got them. You don't have a lot of them. I mean, mostly now you're gonna have RS thirty and RS forty, but you got them out there. So if we're gonna look at this, what about? Okay, single lots less than an acre, four hundred. Single lots an acre to two, six hundred. Two to four, eight hundred. More than four, twelve hundred. That I.
Okay, go back, go back now that I'm getting tired.
Well, now that we're just looking at it, I mean, if I'm on.
So you're saying less than an acre?
Less than an acre right now, let me just look at some. Like I have thirty thousand square feet, right?
But why does it say two hundred and fifty here?
Because that that was, that was a recommendation that Planning and Zoning made to the village council back in twenty twenty. I wanted you guys to have what we had, what we had recommended, so you could look at what got approved.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so look, if I have thirty thousand square feet, and I do twelve percent, that's thirty-six hundred square feet to build. Okay, so if I have a twenty-five hundred square foot house, I still got eleven hundred feet, eleven hundred square feet. So if you took it up to four hundred, because I'm thinking, you know, if you're gonna, it, and I don't know if this'll fly, but if you're less, oh, that means RS twenty though, too, doesn't it?
I was gonna say, I I mean, you look at that, that's a ten by forty building, because not everybody's gonna wanna come out of pocket to do, um, all of these other situations, but they can do a ten by thirty building. Those are, you can go down to Aberdeen and buy one tomorrow.
But it's gotta match the house.
They, you can special order it to your exact custom shades and trim, but you still got a ten by thirty building on a one acre lot, or less than.
Who would build a ten by thirty?
They do ten by thirty.
Ten by thirty garage?
Yeah.
Or, sorry.
They're just little accessory buildings, yeah. The one I have for my farm is ten by twenty-four.
So you're two forty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, all right.
Just to give you a.
A visual?
Visual perspective of how big that, it's a fairly large-sized building. I could fit, I could fit a lawnmower in there.
Can you fit an house truck?
A small car, um.
Says here, accessory buildings larger than twelve foot. In any direction, require a foundation.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, it gets real.
So now that would be a hi, that would be the hiccup. So that would have to be, well, you just put a pad down.
Exactly.
But yeah, but but you gotta be really serious about what you're doing, not just putting up a storage shack.
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys are good with leaving three hundred square feet for the less than acre, which is fine.
I think that makes sense, and I think moving up, when you, once you get into the one and a half, or, you know, one to two acre lots, that's a whole different structure. It's a whole different visual for for the lot itself. It can take a little bit more.
Five fifty?
Size. I would be okay with five fifty. So you, sir?
I think, yeah, I I think it's fine.
So you'd have three hundred in less than an acre, five fifty, one to two, like one point nine nine, and two to four would be eight hundred, over four would be twelve hundred. Which is totally fine.
And you're saying on the the two to four acres, you can have two eight hundred square foot buildings, but you cannot combine those into one sixteen hundred square foot building, even if your house, if it, even if it doesn't exceed twenty-five percent of the total area of the roof.
On single lots of two to four acres, total. Well, it says total accessory building square footage, so you can.
So I think you can have two at eight hundred.
Two four hundreds.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, two four hundred, yeah, yeah, two four, not two eight, two four hundreds, yes, yes, yep.
Two four hundred?
Yeah, that's already, you don't need to write that, that's already in the order.
No, but, okay, I'm just.
Two four hundreds.
Or one eight hundred, is that right?
Yeah.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, in, but in the, in the one to less than two, if we go to five fifty, you're still a single accessory building. You don't get to start doubling until you get above two.
It's, it simplifies the math, it splits everything.
Yeah, it's explainable.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, I'm, I'm good with it, and so if we wanna make a motion to send that to council and ask them to consider increasing it to five fifty. And, I mean, I'm, I'm good with it, and, so if we wanna make a motion to send that to council and ask them to consider increasing it to five fifty, I'm very good with that.
I'll make a motion to provide, or produce to the council that we suggest increasing that, an acre greater less than, no less, no greater than two, so from one to two acres to five fifty square foot.
Okay. And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Easy peasy lemon squeezy. Nice job, you guys.
Who, who submitted that?
Tasha.
I did.
Square feet, okay. I don't think, I don't think we can get that into the public hearing, I don't know, I'll ask Lisa. I don't, well, I'll, we'll see. Okay, alright, guys, anything else?
Okay, that's it?
I'm making a motion to quit and adjourn.
Certainly.